This is a public hearing for the City of Norfolk Planning Commission. At this time, we ask that you turn off all pagers, cell phones, and other electronic signaling devices. The procedures for this public hearing are located in the lobby, along with the agenda and copies of the staff recommendation for today's hearing. Meeting schedules and agendas for the City Planning Commission are available online. Staff reports and map for the City Planning Commission hearing will be available online approximately two weeks prior to the public hearing. Be advised, the City of Norfolk Planning Commission public hearings are recorded for broadcast on the following media outlets: on the city's TV channel 48 on Friday and Saturday evenings at 9:00 PM, and on the city's official YouTube channel Norfolk TV, which is accessible from the city's website at www.norfoc.gov. Items are normally taken up in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. However, a request may be made for a withdrawal or continuance at the beginning of the meeting. The planning department staff will introduce each application, and a member of planning staff may provide a brief presentation upon request, followed by a staff recommendation. Following the staff presentation, the commission will hear from the proponents and then the opponents, if there are any. Anyone desiring to speak should approach the podium, state his or her name and mailing address. The speaker should speak directly to the commission and not the audience. After all proponents and opponents have been heard, the commission will allow rebuttal, first from proponents and then opponents. Rebutts are limited to a total of five minutes each. At the conclusion of the public hearing on each item and after considering all information presented, the commission will take action on the matter. Action on each matter by the commission will be to adopt or fail to adopt by roll call vote a motion to approve the granting of the request. The statement of the motion and the affirmative by a member of the staff is a matter of voting procedure and in no way indicates the recommendation of the staff or consensus of the commission. Following the action by the commission on the matter, a written recommendation will be made to City Council. Anyone who appears before the commission will be notified by the City Clerk's office of the date on which the City Council will consider the application. With that, let me apologize for the brief delay in us getting started today. The chairman was not as organized as he should have been. With that, Lenny, we can get into our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We're going to begin with the continued agenda. The very first item for us today will be by the City Planning Commission on behalf of Adams Outdoor Advertising for a zoning text amendment to Chapter 16 Signs of the Zoning Ordinance in order to modify existing regulations pertaining to outdoor advertising signs, including the conversion of signs to digital format.
Good afternoon. Your first agenda item is a request to amend Chapter 16 of our zoning ordinance, which is signage, and it does pertain to what we call outdoor advertising signs, or most people call billboards. Just to give you a little bit of history, from 1950 to 1960, billboards were permitted by right in the city. That means that if you wanted to build a billboard, you went in, you got your building permit, and you were able to build it. Starting in 1968 and all the way up until 1991, the city began to require a special exception, and that is essentially it requires a public hearing before this board and then on to City Council. In 1992, we yet again made another amendment to the zoning ordinance, and we created criteria. So, billboards were still required only by special exception, and in addition to that, we set forth some pretty stringent criteria which they would have to meet in order to be granted the special exception. One of the first parts of the regulations, the '92 regulations, and those regulations are still in place today. So, we created a definition for what outdoor advertising sign is. So, it's a structure, and it displays space for general advertising. It is not primarily or necessarily for advertising related to the premises. So, it's an off-site sign, so to speak. We do call them billboards, and they're designed so that signs can be changed on these structures Then we went into a bunch of locational criteria. So, again, these are criteria that if you're applying for a special exception, you would have to meet. We allowed them in all of our commercial districts. We allowed them in our I-1, I-2, and I-3 districts. In a commercial district, they could be 450 square feet per face. In industrial districts, they were 750 square feet maximum per face. And then there could be no more than two faces. Additional locational criteria: they couldn't be located on a roof, they couldn't be attached or painted to a building, they had to be set back 20 feet from a right-of-way, they could be located, they could not be located within 500 feet of any other sign on the same side of the street, and we said that back-to-back V-signs are counted as one sign. And the graphic on your screen, that's what a V-sign is. It's back-to-back, we only count those as one sign. Additional locational criteria: they must be located less than 300 feet from a residential district fronting on both sides of the street. They must be oriented to be viewed, or they cannot be oriented to be viewed from any waterway or body of water within, surrounding the city. They cannot be located within 500 feet from any intersection, and they cannot be located within 200 feet of any underpass, overpass, or bridge, or tunnel. So, based on these criteria, we did receive a request from Adams to make an amendment. And their amendment originally is as follows: what they wanted to do is to allow existing conforming signs to be converted to LED types of signs. And they wanted to allow that by right, so they wouldn't have to come in and get a special exception to do that conversion. And again, when I say conforming, I mean they meet all of the locational criteria and they have a special exception. Now, we did have a conversation with the planning commission, and we have modified that, and I'll get into that in a minute. The second part of their request would be to allow signs to increase in height, and depending on what they are oriented to, that height would be different. So, in order to accomplish the first part, we had to modify our existing definition and add the following sentence: "Outdoor advertising signs may contain light-emitting diode," that's what LED is, "electronic displays which comply with state and federal law." Again, originally, the request was that this conversion to LED would be allowed by right on existing conforming billboards. In speaking with the commission, and this is a request, their request essentially, to modify the zoning ordinance, they made, there's a modification to that request now. In addition to allowing the, these signs, the conforming, existing signs, to be converted to LED, they added kind of a caveat: if they are oriented to a highway, they could also raise those signs in height, and it would be to 45 feet from the base of the highway. And they could do both of those things, the conversion and the raising in height by right. We would not require a special exception for those things if the signs are oriented to the highway. For other signs, and again, this is really the second part of the request, and this isn't going to change. For signs that are not adjacent to a highway, and by highway, we mean 564, 264, and 64. So, signs that are oriented to other roads in the street, they could increase their height, and it's up to 35 feet, and it was 24 feet before, but that would require a special exception. So, based on these standards, the staff is recommending that this modified request be approved. Any questions?
Thank you, Susan. We have any questions of Susan, commissioners?
I don't have any questions of Susan. Adam, I reviewed the exhibit that you quickly amended for us. Under 16-6.15A, where it requires a special exception, there's not a exception there to raising the height along the interstate. Did we want, did you want me to add that in?
Right. So, because, and there are several subsections to 16-6.15, and it's actually subsection L that is also contemplated for amendment by this application, and if subsection L is also adopted, then any sign up to 45 feet tall that faces a highway would be conforming. So, you wouldn't need a special exception to go from, to go up to the 45 feet, because that would be conforming. And so long as you're only doing the LED change, the exception at A2 also says you don't need a special exception. So, working together, you can do the LED change, and you can also go to 45 feet in height facing an interstate with these changes.
What about a non-conforming sign? Can that be raised without a special exception?
No, because we have a provision that says that, that a non-conformity, a non-conforming structure cannot be altered, up to 50% of the structure's value, cannot be altered in excess of that without either coming into a compliance, or I think we have a special exception process for making changes to a non-conforming structure. So, if it's already non-conforming, it would still require a special exception.
Unless raising it doesn't add 50% of the value. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's true. That's true. I don't, I don't know if that's feasible or not, because I'm not in the end...
You know, given the engineering required to put these in the ground to start with, it's going to require an entirely new structure to raise it up in the air. The older ones in Norfolk are on multiple poles. Those are very old and very non-conforming. Most of those that you see are on a monopole are conforming, because they have gone through our process.
Okay. Okay.
We have any other question or comment, commissioners? Thank you, Susan. Do want to acknowledge that the applicant is here. Steve, would you like to speak?
Of course. Good afternoon, Chairman Fraley, members of the planning commission. For the record, my name's Steve Romine, local attorney, 999 Waterside Drive, Norfolk. Thank you for a moment to just thank the staff and Susan for all our hard and diligent work, and Adam for the last-minute drafting. I think, as you indicated, it does work for us. We think it's a good change to the ordinance, brings digital in, and allows us to convert those several sites on the interstate without getting a permit. I think the language that Adam drafted, the only thing I would suggest is that lead-in paragraph Adam, I guess, is still going to be part of that amendment that provides for LED, the preamble.
Right. There's an Exhibit A, it's also part of the package, that's...
Then there's Exhibit B. Okay. With that, we are very happy to support this text amendment. We appreciate all the hard work that went into it, and we'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of Mr. Romine from commissioners? Thank you, Steve. Any comment from commissioners? Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Newcomb?
The motion is to recommend that the text amended, text amendment, as presented at the public hearing, be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Aye.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Thank you, and we'll make that recommendation to council. Next on the continued agenda, Keith W. Romer?
Keith W. Romer is here for a change of zoning from conditional I-1, limited industrial and R-8 single-family districts to conditional I-1 on properties located on the northeast corner of Westminster Avenue and East End Avenue. These properties front 95 feet more or less along the northern line of Westminster and 110 feet more or less along the eastern line of East End Avenue. Premises numbered 3404 and the western half of 3406 Westminster Avenue.
Thank you, Lenny. I note that there is no opposition to this application, but I do want to acknowledge that the applicant is in attendance.
All right. The motion before you is to recommend that the change of zoning to conditional I-1 be approved subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Thank you.
All right. We now move to the third item on the continued agenda. This is CVS for the following applications on property located on the southwest corner of 38th Street and Hampton Boulevard and the southeast corner of 38th and Bowden's Ferry Road. Property fronts 125 feet more or less along the western line of Hampton Boulevard and 405 feet more or less along the southern line of 38th Street. Premises 3717 Hampton Boulevard. The three applications involved with this are: A, a special exception to operate a retail goods establishment operating after midnight; B, a special exception to operate a commercial drive-through; and C, a special exception for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption.
Thank you, Lenny, and I note while we do not have any opposition at this point, I think the applicant is intending to request a continuance.
I'll come forward briefly to state it. And for the record, Randy Royal addressed Kemble Horned Associates. Yes, sir, we'd like a deferral to work with staff a little more on the architecture, come back and see you next month.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
The motion is to continue the items until the public hearing to be held on Thursday, March 27, 2014, at 2:30 PM in the City Council chambers. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Ms. Hale, Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Thank you, Lenny. Still on the continued agenda?
Yes, we are. We are now going to the fourth item, which is Stonehouse Lounge, which is a request for a special exception to operate entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages on property fronting 538 feet more or less along the eastern line of North Military Highway, beginning to 712 feet more or less from the northern line of Robin Hood Road and extending Norfolk Lee. Premises numbered 3300 North Military Highway.
And I note that we have no opposition. We do want to acknowledge that the applicant is in attendance, but there is no opposition.
All right. The motion is to recommend that the hours of operation, the special exception, be approved subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Onto the regular agenda, Lenny?
Now, as we move to the regular agenda, the first application is a text amendment initiated by the City Planning Commission to the general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, to establish locational criteria and performant standards for automobile-related establishments, including the East Little Creek Road and Military Highway corridors.
We have any, we don't have any opposition. No one has signed up for or against any comment or discussion from commissioners on this particular application. Hearing none? Lenny?
The motion is to recommend that the amendment to Plan Norfolk 2030 be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
We now move to, to the longest application I've seen in a long time here. This is the City Planning Commission for following amendments to recognize on the zoning map, the character district boundaries as adopted in Plan Norfolk 2030. It is, A, it's to amend Chapter 2 definitions of the zoning ordinance, to change the terminology of character district urban to character district traditional; and B, to amend the zoning map as follows: to designate the following properties as being within the downtown character district, for properties in the area generally bounded on the south by the Elizabeth River, on the east by the Norfolk Southern Railroad Lambert's Point Line, on the northeast by Interstate 264, East City Hall Avenue, Fenchurch Street, Church Street, East Virginia Beach Boulevard, and Salter Street, on the north by East Princess Anne Road, on the northwest by Granby Street, East Virginia Beach Boulevard, Duke Street, The Hague, and West Bramleton Avenue, and on the west by the Midtown Tunnel. Two, to designate the following properties as being within the traditional character district, for properties in the area generally bounded on the south by the city of Chesapeake, on the east by the Norfolk Southern Railroad Sewell's Point Line, on the north by the northern branch of the Lafayette River, on the northwest by Wayne Creek, Huntington Place, Willow Wood Drive, Norway Place, Ashland Circle, and the Lafayette River, on the west by the Elizabeth River, and on the southwest by the Norfolk Southern Railroad Lambert's Point Line, Interstate 264, East City Hall Avenue, Fenchurch Street, Church Street, East Virginia Beach Boulevard, Salter Street, East Princess Anne Road, Granby Street, Duke Street, The Hague, West Bramleton Avenue, the Midtown Tunnel, and the Elizabeth River. Three, to designate the following properties as being within the suburban character district, for properties in the area generally bounded on the south by the Elizabeth, by the eastern branch of the Elizabeth River, on the east by the city of Virginia Beach, on the north by the Chesapeake Bay, on the west by the Elizabeth River, and on the southwest by the Lafayette River, Ashland Circle, Norway Place, Willow Wood Drive, Huntington Place, Wayne Creek, the northern branch of the Lafayette River, and the Norfolk Southern Railroad Sewell's Point Line.
Thank you, Lenny. While there is no opposition, we do want to acknowledge that there are two folks here who do not wish to speak but are in favor of it, Ms. Murray Miller of the DNC, and Mr. Thomas G. Johnson III, that's L. Nesbitt. Any discussion on this particular application from commissioners?
Because I would just want to say at this point that a tremendous amount of work has gone into it. I just want to thank Matt, I want to thank our staff, and our new planning director, Mr. Homewood, for bringing a project that's been in the works for many years. Many people don't realize how much this is going to help areas in our city, small businesses, and the like succeed. It's a very, very important step to bring our city in line with other progressive cities across this country, and it, it may be underappreciated now by some people out there, but it's not underappreciated by this, by me or this commission. I just wanted to make sure I was on record of thanking you all for this. It's going to do great things.
I would just like to echo what Dr. Dan, it's Dr. Newman, has said. It seems to me we've been on this particular, riding this horse for a long journey, and we finally got into the point there where it appears that we are bringing ourselves into the next century, finally, with regard to a major issue, particularly in our downtown areas and our, and our traditional areas. So, I'm just happy that we can move forward with this. I think long-term, it's going to be a very, very positive thing for our city, and we certainly hope that we can continue to have the support that we've had. And kudos to our staff, particularly Matthew Simon, for really getting into the nuts and bolts and crevices of this, this idea.
All right. The motion is to recommend that the zoning text and zoning map amendments be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Looking forward to that coming to fruition. Thank you, Matthew. Lenny?
The next item is a, also initiation by the City Planning Commission for a zoning text amendment to repeal Chapter 15, off-street parking and loading of the zoning ordinance, and to adopt a new parking chapter, and to amend Chapters 2, 4, 8, 9, 10, 13, and 25 in order to update the parking standards for automobiles and bicycles citywide.
And once again, we acknowledge that there is no opposition, but we want to also acknowledge that Ms. Miller and Mr. Johnson III are here in favor of this application as well and do not wish to speak. Lenny?
The motion is to recommend that the zoning text amendment be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Thank you. Item four.
Item four is a City Planning Commission-initiated zoning text amendment to Section 16-8.7 pertaining to signs permitted in special public, special purpose districts of the zoning ordinance to modify the regulations for the IN-1 institutional and IN-2 institutional campus zoning districts.
And I note that we have no opposition. Any comment or discussion from commissioners on this particular application? Hearing none?
The motion is to recommend that the zoning text amendment be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Next application is a request by David Colby for a change of zoning from conditional OVR, Oceanview Residential District, to conditional R-12 multifamily on property fronting 259 feet more or less along the southern line of East Oceanview Avenue. Property also fronts 130 feet more or less along the eastern line of 14th Bay Street. Premises numbered 3401 East Oceanview Avenue.
And we acknowledge that there is no opposition to this application. We do want to note that the applicant, Mr. David Colby, is in attendance. We have any comment or discussion from commissioners on the application?
Mr. Colby, I want to thank you for being willing to invest in Oceanview. It looks like you're going to be building some nice homes along there. And my understanding is you'll be going through the process here at the planning where the design will be reviewed by our staff. It looks like, from the site plan, that the, the houses themselves could be a bit cookie-cutter, so I'm just hoping that the designs will come out in such a way that they...
I actually brought, just if y'all wanted to see...
Mr. Colby, if you would, just give us your name and address, please.
David Colby. My address is 1224 Homestead Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia. I brought, I felt that y'all might want to see something, so I brought some...
Sure.
...elevations, if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Colby, if you want, I'm working for further comment while you're at the podium. You're certainly welcome to do that.
Well, we felt that we saw the OVR, the special zoning that happened in 2007 wasn't very popular, and so we think the, the residential elevations that we're representing is consistent with what's going on in Oceanview. We've got the rear, you know, entry with the garage, it's not front-loading garages. So, we just feel it's going to be a nice fit, and, you know...
And will each of the houses be different from the next, or are they all...
Yes, we're going to have slight elevation, elevation changes. There's going to be 30-foot wide, another one will be 34-foot wide, then we'll change kind of the, the gable fronts and a little bit with the porch, to just make it a little bit different, and maybe some brick walks and, you know, make it look good.
Great.
Yeah, I think one of our concerns is trying to avoid a cookie-cutter impression if we, if we could at all. We've seen the, that in two blocks down from you, I guess, each one of the dwelling units appears to be a little bit different. So, we appreciate you making an investment in our city, though.
Okay. Very well.
Any further discussion or question, Mr. Colby?
The motion is to recommend that the conditional change of zoning be approved subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck.
All right. Next application before us is Calvary Baptist Church for a conditional change of zoning from R-8, single-family to institutional, IN-1 on property located on the northwest corner of Thomas Street and Elmhurst Avenue. Property fronts 425 feet more or less along the western line of Thomas Street and 90 feet more or less along the northern line of Elmhurst Avenue. Property fronts, also fronts 24 feet more or less along the southern line of Windermere Avenue. Premises numbered 3301 Thomas Street.
And I note that there is no opposition. Signed up to speak is the applicant, Richard Smith.
Mr. Chairman, I really have nothing to add.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate you being with us. Any comments or any discussion on this particular application from commissioners? Hearing none, Lenny?
The motion is to recommend that the change of zoning be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck. Thank you.
All right. Next application is by Josh Looney for a special exception for mixed use within the pedestrian-commercial overlay district, Five Points, on properties located on the north, on the southwest corner of Sewell's Point Road and Hugo Street. Property fronts 99 feet more or less along the western line of Sewell's Point and 181 feet more or less along the southern line of Hugo Street. Premises 6137 through 6145 Sewell's Point Road.
Thank you, Lenny. And I note that there is no opposition, but we do have the applicant who does not wish to speak, Mr. Ashton, Mr. Austin Looney, excuse me, also here in support but does not wish to speak, Ms. Ann Wilson. And we have Mr. Looney. Did I do something wrong, Mr. Looney?
No, no. Everything is.
Two, two loanees.
Two loanees?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Mr. Josh Looney, wish to speak?
I have nothing really to add.
Thank you. Any comment from Commissioners or discussion? Lenny?
The motion is to recommend that the special exception be approved subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Thank you.
Next application is a request by Golden China for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment on property fronting 100 feet more or less along the southern line of West Ocean View Avenue and 300 feet more or less along the western line of First View Street. Property also fronts 100 feet more or less along the northern line of Portview Avenue. Premises numbered 9645 First View Street.
Thank you, Lenny. And I note that there is no opposition and here in favor but does not wish to speak is the applicant, Ms. Joanna White-Chen. Thank you. Lenny?
The motion is to recommend that the hours of operation, the special exception, be approved subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck.
Next application is Island Crab Caribbean Smokehouse for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment on property fronting 300 feet more or less along the northern line of West 21st Street, beginning 125 feet more or less from the western line of Omahondra Avenue and extending westward. Premises numbered 222 West 21st Street, Unit J.
Thank you, Lenny. And I note that there is no opposition. Any comment or discussion from Commissioners? Do want to acknowledge that the applicant is here. Dorothy Lovell?
Yes.
Lenny?
All right. The motions recommend that the hours of operation, the special exception, be approved subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Ms. Flood?
Yes.
Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck.
The next application, Small's Restaurant and Catering Company, to amend a previously granted special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment on property located on the northeast corner of West 27th Street and Hampton Boulevard. Property fronts 80 feet more or less along the northern line of West 27th Street and 75 feet more or less along the eastern line of Hampton Boulevard. Premises numbered 2700 Hampton Boulevard.
Thank you, Lenny. Do want to acknowledge that the applicant is here, does not wish to speak, and that there is no opposition.